You're here?
Here.
Todd Barber's here.
Here.
Jerry, I thought I saw you.
Here.
Okay, Mike?
I'm here.
And Marcus?
I'm here.
Okay. Um, okay, all present accounted for.
Okay, great. Mr. Mayor, we've got for our workshop tonight. We've got a couple of policies we want to review with you. I'm assuming everybody can hear me. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, beautiful. All right. We put these agendas out. We're always constantly going back and checking behind ourselves. And a lot of times I'll reach out to you to see if you had any questions. And we had a couple of suggestions pop up on these two policies tonight. So what I'm going to do is just hit the highlights of what the policy is and the last minute correction that was made. The first one is appointment policy. If you recall, what you had in the past was if you had an appointment, the board chair made a recommendation to the city council. For a lot of reasons, that's not the best way of doing it. And essentially what we're doing is as vacancies come up, people submit their application. It goes to the town clerk who serves as a clearinghouse. We validate that they are in fact qualified to serve such as being a resident of the town. And we do that, I believe, based on where the voting is. And then it simply goes to the board for decision of who you want. We put in the policy that board members are eligible to reach out to the individual candidates to ask them about any thoughts, things of that nature. If you look under application process, that second paragraph, just before you get to appointments, I'll read the statement. It says, "Application for applicants not selected for appointment will remain in the clerk's office for one year and will continue to be considered for open seats for any boards or committees as seats become available." That was a last minute revision to kind of clear, kind of clarify question that arose. Over in section three of the appointment policy, we just had a little typo there that we cleaned up about how positions are advertised in that section three item A. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that any board member might have.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question. This is Marcus.
Yes, sir.
What is the impetus behind the applicant, application being held by in the clerk's office for a year?
Well, the, the reason is that sometimes you'll have people that are wanting to serve. And this is not an unusual policy. Just in case, let's say you, you have a the tree committee, for example, and you have a vacancy and people apply. And, you know, if someone's not selected, well, their, their application is still in the pool. And maybe three months down the road, you have another vacancy on either that committee or another committee. It gives them an opportunity to be considered without having to necessarily reapply.
But when, when so, so case in point then, and, and that's not a bad idea. But let me ask a couple of follow up questions. One, are we going to notify this individual that there's a position opening? And would they like to be considered versus just putting them on there? And, and here's why I'm asking that question. Let's say, for instance, we have somebody who applied to be on the planning board. They didn't get on because there are other candidates and so forth and so on, more qualified, whatever the case is. But then there is a position open on the stormwater committee. Are we just going to put them on a stormwater committee? Or are we going to contact them before to let them know that that is something that their name would be put among others? And the reason I ask is trying not to get somebody on a board who probably doesn't want to serve in that particular capacity or position?
Right. Excellent question. And Kathy and I've had some discussions. So Kathy, if your recollection is different than mine, as I recall, what we would do is reach out to them to let them know there's a vacancy on the stormwater committee and would they like to be considered?
Okay, so that's good. Second question is when they complete the form? Because if, for instance, tonight, we have some people within the town that have asked to be on this advisory committee for the U D O and so forth. But some of them have only selected a particular committee. For instance, if it's the ABC board, or if it's the planning board or board of adjustments, they've selected only one. So if their application were to remain there, but then they've been considered for another board, how can we legally, and that's probably a question for Karen and you, say that they can serve on that particular new board, but they haven't selected that in the original application?
Well, Karen and Kathy that can respond, but let me give you my take on it, Marcus. Is I'm looking at the form as we speak, and I think what you could do is under boards and committee, you could put a parentheses and say, check as many as apply.
Okay.
And I think the, I think the other statement could be, you could put something in there that says, if for some reason you're not selected for whatever you applied for, if you applied for one committee, would you consider other committees and then check that?
That satisfies my, my, my question. Thank you very much.
Let me, let me take a moment of personal privilege. Kathy or Karen, do you have any thoughts?
The, that's just sort of an administrative function where they check the boxes that just sort of helps us know which committee they're interested in. Because the town of Indian Trail has so few applicants coming in. For example, if I get several people for a planning board position, it's open and they select one person and I have five more people that, you know, I have their applications for a year and a board of adjustment position comes open, then we will let those applicants know. I talked to the town manager and Brandy and we let those applicants know and we ask them, are you interested in that? And if they say yes, then, you know, just depending on whether we have a lot or not, sometimes I can just print it and check it and go with it, or I'll ask them to pull up another application, check the board of adjustments, just so we have a record of it and send it in. But it's more of an administrative procedure and, you know, we can, we can make them stick to that one application, that one border committee, or, you know, we can be a little more flexible. And we, we choose to be a little more flexible because we want people involved in the town.
Maybe one of the things, so Kathy, I'm happy that, that, that we added this provision there to keep them on file because that makes it easier to get more people to participate on this thing. So this is a good thing, right? The only one, maybe a suggestion could be is where we have a little checkbox and say, would you like to be considered for other open positions on boards in the town? And then they, they check it, then we know that, that will serve for them to be put anywhere on, on any other board that they, that, that becomes open.
We can certainly add that. That's not a big deal. I mean, we, we sort of do that inherently, but we can certainly add a checkbox if you'd like.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just, it's from, just from a compliance legal standpoint, that's all, but I like the idea.
Like I said, it, it doesn't really have any, that, that's not something statutes speak to. And, you know, we, we follow those rules. The, the application, I have to double check, but I think it's required in the records and the record keeping requirements that we keep those applications for a year. So that's why we keep them for a year from the date of signature.
Thank you. No further questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
I got a question. This is Todd Barber. I was kind of surprised to see ABC board on here. I was just kind of wondering is, does the state not have any guidelines for this? Or they leave it totally to the town? I just, quick question, just curious. If anybody can answer that.
They have a lot of guidelines in the statutes, but they don't speak to whether you have to be a resident or not to serve on the ABC board. The, um, just on the legal side, Todd, the town of Indian Trail Council is the appointing authority for the ABC, for members of the local ABC board. So that is completely within the board's, the council's discretion on who gets appointed to sit on that local board.
I just, just, just curious. Thank you.
And Kathy and, and maybe David, aren't we looking to align those expiration dates up with the rest of the committees? Or is that my error?
We, we have considered changing the term ending dates from March to June. But I think, I think the board was wanting to let things kind of settle down and maybe take care of that in April. Is that right?
Talking about the ABC board.
Mr. Jeff said he'd had conversations with you about that. David?
Who did? Who had any conversation?
Jeff, your manager?
No, we, we have not, no, we've not talked about that.
Then it was just a consideration to line them up with our other boards and committees. I thought he said he had spoken with you about that. So we're looking to do that maybe in April if the board wants to.
Gotcha. Okay.
Right. If there are no questions and if you have anything outside this meeting, don't hesitate to reach out to me. Otherwise, we'll slate it for approval at your February 9th meeting. We'll place it on the consent agenda. The next item. And if you'll notice that board member Morris asked me to, and I think it was a great idea, to send out some of the older policies so you could see what we were working on. And I think the quote, Jerry, we were just, these policies are just pulling together various documents. The next one deals with just general policies for the city council. Under section one, communication with town staff in that last sentence. Mike had brought up a suggestion that town elected officials may not direct town staff. I think the previous word was should not direct town staff. Was a little bit of a change from what you saw earlier. The other change dealt with section six. There was some stuff in, in the process of saving the file that, that some of the text didn't get saved properly. If you look at section six, number nine, just clarifying that the mayor, Mayor Protem may act as chair while participating remotely. And the mayor may engage in the typical marital duty of casting tie breaking votes. I think those were the only two things. Is that right, Kathy?
Yes, most of it was, um, most of it was just sort of reorganized and rewritten.
And so those, those are the two. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do. And I know that there's a couple of policies that were that the board has passed since I've been here that I'm not seeing. So if we can review, I, I have not seen this document. So if you could shoot it over and let me just take a quick peek at it, I'd appreciate that.
I thought you had, and we'll send it over here before the sun rises in the morning.
Thank you.
Members have any questions?
Anyone have a question? Ms. McLaurin, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. So those are the two policies. And like we do with all policies, we appreciate Karen's feedback on that. And assuming things are working well, then we will schedule it for February 9th again in the consent agenda. Our next presenter will be Van Harold, university, Union County Tax Assessor, who will talk about the reevaluation process. And Kathy, is Van here?
Moving him up to panelists.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening.
Good evening, Van.
Wow, hadn't seen you, hadn't seen you in about 15 years, probably.
Not quite that long, but time does have a way of getting away from you.
Yeah. All right. So, so am I going to be sharing my screen or is this?
The, the board is seeing your presentation before them.
Okay, I do not have control over it. So I'm going to need to be able to share, to be able to advance the slides myself if that's possible. It's saying I can't share the screen.
Okay, Abby, can you do that? Or do you just need to let him? Van, you need to let Abby know when to move to the next slide.
Let me know, then I, I can just move it, move it for you.
Okay, that'd be fine. All right. So good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate your time. I'm Van Harold, Union County Tax Administrator. I've been tax administrator since 2017. I've been with the county since 2004, so I'm going on 17 years in this area. We've seen a lot of change and, and as is evidenced, as you'll see in this reappraisal process as we walk through this. I'm getting the next slide. We've got a couple of people on the call with me tonight. Robin Mary, she is our assessment director. She's over personal property, land records, tax relief, all these various programs. Phil Everie, he is our appraisal director and he is overseeing the reappraisal process as he has since 2020. I think this is his fourth or fifth reappraisal in Union County. So we, we've been around a while. Between the three of us, I think we've got about 60 years of experience working in the tax office in Union County. So we know the area. And Mitzi Baucham is not with us tonight. She is our revenue division director, which is the collections office and oversees tax collections and utility collections as well. So just to touch briefly on our guiding principles, rules and policies as we go really in our day to day operations as well as this reappraisal. Our number one goal is to be fair and equitable to all residents in Union County which includes Indian Trail as well. We want to make sure all properties are assessed equitably and people are treated fairly in their interactions with our office. Everything we do is governed by the North Carolina general statutes. All of our processes, procedures are, are undergirded by those statutes and, and we do not stray from those statutes or we would have some problems here in the office from a legal standpoint. We're also governed by, we implement industry best practices as recommended by the North Carolina Department of Revenue and the I double A O, which is the International Association of Assessing Officers. We are a jurisdictional member of that organization and use them for training for various purposes. Next slide. And as, as we go into this, I'm going to, I had some conversations with Kathy and Alicia over the past week or so. We're going to try to, to make this as brief and concise as possible. It is a 30 minute presentation, but we'll try to get through it quicker and skip over slides that we can. We just want to make sure you have, that you're operating from the same standpoint and same set of information that every other jurisdiction is on the county. I think this is our 12th presentation in the past. Probably five to six weeks. So we've been busy both in private organizations as well as the other jurisdictions. So topic at hand is the reappraisal. What is that and why are we doing it? Countywide reappraisal is systematic review and appraisal of all real property located in Union County. This is strictly a real property pros, procedure and process. We do it to be in compliance with state statutes and existing case law. And primarily is to reestablish equity and fairness in the property tax base. We'll show you some data here in a few minutes that, that shows where we're at in relation to the market, real estate market. The, in North Carolina, by statute, we are a, and a market value state, meaning our, at the time of the reappraisal, our assessed values are to be reflective of the current real estate market at that time. The final piece here on this slide is to restore tax based loss to equalization. And we'll explain that here in a few slides as well. So from a timing standpoint, there, there are three time periods that, that govern when a reappraisal occurs in a county. The maximum time period between reappraisal cycles is eight years. So our current reappraisal that we're operating on is a 2015 valuation cycle. So we have not adjusted tax values in Union County since 2015. As we all know, we've had a very active real estate market and that is why we're where we are today. The, the bottom point here, and I'll come back up to the second point in a moment, but the Board of County Commissioners has the option to advance a reappraisal cycle to a more frequent cycle, such as two or four years, six years, whatever they deem appropriate based on the data that, that they're using. 2004 and 2008 were four year reappraisal cycles. Then we know the economy went south. They did not do one in 2012. And the last one was 2015. And here we are again in 2021. The second point here brings us to, to the reason we're doing this now. So we, we've got a lot of questions. Why are you doing this in the middle of a pandemic? You know, people are suffering economically. And we understand all that and agree 100% with all of that. Unfortunately, there are certain data points that the state looks at and they tell us if we break those thresholds by statute, we have to do a reappraisal in three years. We got that notification in 2018 to do a reappraisal effective for 2021. And that's, and that's why this one was highlighted in red. Kind of tells you, we triggered that statute. Again, this is the second time we triggered it in 2012 because we had 120% of the ratio. Abby, if you can go to the next slide, that'd kind of go into this a little bit more. So this touches on the ratio differences that the state looks at. If we are 15% either side of market value, you trigger a reappraisal. And so currently we are at 69% of market as of the end of December. That's how rapidly the market has changed in the last six years. The second criteria you have to check the box on here is if your population is greater than 75,000 people. Union County is significantly larger than that. So that means the statutory, this statute governs our reappraisal process in addition to the other timelines as, as pointed out earlier. Next slide. So our overall timeline for this project, now this is not something that happens overnight. We started this process back in 2018. We had to submit our reappraisal plan, which basically was telling the Department of Revenue, this is how we anticipate doing this process. In 2009, in October 19th of 2020, we presented the proposed schedule of values to the Board of County Commissioners. November 2nd, they held a public hearing. That schedule was adopted on the 16th and remained open for, open for appeal and review through the end of December. There were no appeals of the schedule, so it became official at the end of December. And the effective date of the reappraisal will be Jan, is January 1st. We anticipate mid February, going back to the Board of County Commissioners to show them an update as to new values from a global standpoint, not individual property owners, but just what the valuation, total valuation for the county was prior to and what it is now. At the end of February, shortly after that meeting, we anticipate mailing individual notices to, to property owners to let each property owner know what their new value is. That will open an appeal period. And during that appeal period, the first 30 days or so, we can, we, it's considered an informal period. You contact our office via phone or online. We'll have an online appeals portal set up so people can submit those electronically to us as well as some online databases for people to look at the value of their home compared to neighboring properties around them to make sure they're assessed equitably. That window will close around the end of May when the Board of Equalization Review adjourns for 2021. Doesn't mean they won't be meeting, but they will not be accepting any new appeals by statute once they invoke that adjournment date. Next slide. Just, these are just some highlights here and you've got the slides that kind of show what we're, what goes into consideration for a reappraisal plan. I won't go into detail here, but we look at budget needs, staffing needs, any outsourcing needs that we need. And then hardware and software compliance and upgrades if we need to do that. Next slide. You heard me mention the proposed schedule of values. So what is that? It's a schedule that's required to be adopted for every reappraisal cycle. It establishes all the rates and procedures that, that we use for valuing property for the next X number of years and whatever that may be until the next reappraisal occurs. So the, the rates and values that we put into play to, for 2020, effective January 1st of this year will be the values that hold until the next reappraisal occurs, whether that's four years or eight years down the road. To build those schedules, we look at real estate sales data. Since 2015, we have had over 34,000 qualified sales. We use the data from those sales along with regional construction cost indexes to, to build our valuation models. The intent of this process is to capture the value of the current real estate market. We are not project, trying to project where we think your value is going. We are adjusting your value from 2015 to what it is today, based on the market that has been in existence in Union County for the past six years. This is a retrospective look at the real estate market. Next slide. Just to touch briefly here on our methodology. This is a mass appraisal process, not a fee appraisal process. If any of you are involved in real estate from an appraisal standpoint, if the appraiser will come to your house and, and look at your property, then maybe find two or three properties next, next door or reasonably close that are similar in determinant value for that property. We look at neighborhoods as a whole and not necessarily two or three individual properties. So that, that is a difference in what we do. And, and somebody made the statement today that mass appraisal would get you within five to 10% of the correct value 95% of the time. So there's always going to be outliers that are out there that there may be data that the property owner has that we don't know about that, that impact the value of their property. And we, we ask them to provide that to us so we can make the corrections if we need to. We do, we do use the same approaches to value that, that a fee appraiser would use. We use sales, cost and income data to, to determine the appropriate value for a property. And when necessary for land valuation, we use processes called allocation and abstraction. And that is where, if there, if you have a community or an appraisal neighborhood where there's no land sales. If there, a certain component of the value of that property, if it's sold, is attributable to the land. Typically that, that rule of thumb is about 20%. And so we would apply that percentage to a sale price to, to, to build the land cost into that value. From a land valuation standpoint, we break the county into smaller groups and appraisal neighborhoods. And we have roughly 900 appraisal neighborhoods throughout the county. That can range anywhere from a, a large geographical area, as you'll see in a moment on our map, just to kind of show you an idea of what that looks like to an individual subdivision or a group of subdivisions. I can think of one in particular, Brandon Oaks there in Indian Trail has multiple appraisal neighborhoods within the same subdivision because it's such a large subdivision with different types of houses in that location. For improvement valuation, we look at replacement costs new that's adjusted for depreciation based on the age or effective age of the property. And, and obviously where the, where the location of the property is. A house that is 2,500 square feet with an acre of land in, on the eastern side of the county is not going to be valued the same as the same house, same type of house with the same size lot on the western side of the county. It's two different locations. The values are going to be different from that standpoint. Next slide. Part of our process of doing this, we, we have an ongoing quality assurance review process. We review, our goal is to review every, physically review every property in Union County when possible. With the rapid new construction that we have in the county, along with the QA process, our appraisal staff stays very busy. We have nine full time appraisers that cover 105,000 parcels. So that's a lot, lot of work for, for those ladies and gentlemen to do. And, and so the, the QA process is an ongoing. Once we finish it, we'll start over. To date, we have reviewed roughly 64,000 parcels throughout the county as far as a, either a desktop review through aerial imagery or actually putting boots on the ground and, and looking at that property. Next slide. You heard me talk about the appraisal neighborhood, that appraisal neighborhoods, that's referred to as neighborhood delineation. It was first used in Union County in the 1980s. Again, it divides the county into smaller geographical units for comparable type properties to be appraised together. We have roughly 115 parcels per appraisal neighborhood. It allows us to analyze those, those data sets as a market, generally speaking, as opposed to looking at, trying to look at the county as one massive data set. It also allows taxpayers to compare their property values to, to properties that are similar to theirs in the same central location. Next slide. This is just a representative, representative map of our appraisal neighborhoods. And you heard me talk about the large geographical area. If you look at the southeast corner of the county, there on Highway 601, it's pretty, a pretty homogeneous color there. There may be some smaller neighborhoods within that area, but for the most part, that area is considered an appraisal neighborhood on its own. If you move toward Indian Monroe, Indian Trail, Stylings, Weddington, Waxall Marvin, you see a lot of gray on this map. If you were to, if we could zoom in on this, if this was an active map, you start to see the different colors populate within that area indicating the different appraisal neighborhoods. But this is just a graphical representation of how we break the county up. So you could see that. Next slide. So we talked about equity and, and making sure people are assessed fairly and equitable, equitably throughout the county. There are four classes of property that we assess and bill for tax purposes. Those motor vehicles, public service companies, which are your companies like Duke Energy, Union Power, CSXL Railroad, Piedmont Natural Gas. Then you have personal property and then you have real estate. The, from a real estate standpoint, you can see this, this percentage here is our sales ratio. And that is what we, we talked about, that statutory mechanism that the state looks at to determine where we're at. 2023, I updated the slide today, but I didn't realize I was going to be able to share the actual presentation. That 2020 number on real estate is actually 69%. So you can see where we went from 99.71 of market, which is right on the market in 2015 to 69% at the end of 2020. Personal property is assessed every year. So that's always going to be whatever the market value is of that property, including depreciation. Public service companies. Uh, public service companies, that is where the equity comes into play uh between, between the property types. By statute, public service companies are allowed to reduce valuation if our sales ratio drops below ninety percent. At some point, the Department of Revenue would tell us, you cannot bill these, this group of companies at a hundred percent. Uh, here's your, the amount of value you can, you can, you can tax him on for this particular tax year. We do not appraise those properties locally, that is a valuation that is done at the state level. And then, of course, motor vehicles are assessed annually as well, and you pay those when you register your vehicle. Next slide. So we, we touched on the equalization, we can skip back, skip over this, go into the next slide. So just to show you the effects of that, um, if you look at the twenty twenty line, um, our public service company values countywide is four hundred and seventy-nine million dollars for two thousand twenty. When we applied, because of the sales ratio being out of line with statute, we, it was equalized by the Department of Revenue. And we could only tax him on three hundred and ninety-seven million dollars of that property, that actually cost the county almost six hundred thousand dollars in property tax revenue. There would be some, there was also some impact for Indian Trail, I don't have your specific numbers. Um, Alicia may have them, she doesn't, she can email me and we can get this for her if you want that information. Next slide. So what is the anticipated countywide impact of the current reappraisal? Um, virtually every property in Union County with the, with limited exceptions, we'll see an increase in property value. Again, our current valuation year is twenty fifteen, so we're six years behind the market. Um, twenty fifteen was a contraction in the tax base, we lost ten percent countywide, we lost ten percent of our tax base. Uh, because we, we were coming out, we were in the middle of a recovery coming out of the two thousand nine, two thousand ten recession. Um, we expect residential and commercial properties both to increase approximately thirty percent globally. Individual properties may, may be more or less than that number. Um, I continue, I live just outside of Indian Trail. Uh, but my house personally, I'm going up forty-nine percent, I already know that. Um, so there, there's going to be some that are even higher than that, some lower, so. But when we talk about thirty percent, we're talking about the global tax base in Union County. That same rate of increase also it will be applied to rural land estimates. We, based on sales of, of large land tracts in the county, we're seeing the same kind of increase in value there as well. When it comes to the actual taxes you pay, um, we're talking about value. People say you're going to increase my taxes thirty percent, that is not true, we, we are only one component of this transaction. So we set the value in each governing body, whether it's the town of Indian Trail, Union County, City Monroe. Each governing body has to set their own tax rate, that ultimately determines how much taxes you pay. As part of this process in a reval, revaluation year, you have to publish a revenue neutral tax rate. And that just means that that's the tax rate based on your new valuation. That would generate the same dollar, same amount of revenue this year that you had last year. It doesn't mean you're required to adopt that, that's up to the board itself, but you do have to publish it by statute. Next slide. We're going to touch briefly on some of our tax relief programs um from, from individual and business standpoint. Um, there's a, some of you may be aware, there's a program for the present use value, and that, that's really a benefit to farm properties. Um, and forestry tracts and horticulture tracks. So with tho, with those properties, their, their ownership and income requirements had to be met and minimum acreage requirements to have to be met as well. Um, the, we do not set the value for these properties, they are taxed at a lower per acre rate than the market value. That valuation is determined by the uh state uh Use Value Advisory Board. Just to show you the impact of that in Union County, we have a hundred and ninety-one thousand acres in Union County that's in that program. There is forty, that's forty-six percent of all acreage in Union County, it's a huge program for us to administer. Uh, but it's also a, a necessity for farmers to be able to maintain their farm properties and, and, and be able to pay affordable tax bills on those properties. Next slide. To show you the difference in rates here, this is, we just touched on this briefly, because I don't think you have a lot of this within the town itself. Um, and based on twenty fifteen, the per acre value rate for agricultural land, which is our largest single area of this program. Is three hundred and eighty-five dollars per acre compared to say five or six thousand per acre for market value. That rate is slightly going up for twenty twenty-one to four hundred and twenty dollars per acre, and that is, that is a um change that the, that the State Board made. To show you the impact of that, um, if a property owner has fifty acres in use value. Um, their value, total valuation would increase from nineteen thousand two fifty to twenty-one thousand dollars. Based on the twenty-one, and based on the twenty twenty tax rates for the county, that would only be an increase of twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents in taxes. The ultimate deferment on that is a ninety percent tax break um for that property owner. Um, so, so it is a significant benefit for those that, that are able to take advantage of that process. Next slide. Uh, I think we, I think we missed a slide. Do you have a slide about um? No, I'm sorry, it's the next slide, I'm sorry, get, get back to that appeals process. They got out of order, I think. So if someone disagrees with their value, what can they do? Um, there's a five-stage appeal process, you heard me mention earlier, the informal review. Probably ninety-five percent of our appeals are handled at that level, they do not even proceed to the local Board of Equalization Review, which is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Um, that board, um, i- if, if the taxpayer disagrees with our value and we can't come to a settlement on, with them. They can appeal to the Board of Equalization Review, from that point, they can appeal to the Property Tax Commission. Um, the Property Tax Commission is the final arbiter of value for any property tax appeals. Um, anything beyond that that goes to the Court of Appeals and Supreme Court is a legal argument, and you have to have legal representation for those appeals. Um, a taxpayer can represent themselves at the local level and at the state level before the Property Tax Commission, they do not need to hire an attorney. Next slide. This is where I thought we were going with that last slide, uh, so our tax relief programs, uh, just to touch briefly on those. We have uh elderly and disabled um tax relief program that, that is a benefit to our senior citizens. Um, there's income requirements and age requirements to, to qualify for that. But it allows an exclusion of twenty-five thousand dollars or fifty percent of the taxable value for their property, if they're the owner and they reside out of the property. There is a disabled veterans uh exclusion uh that, that uh gives, provides an exclusion of forty-five thousand dollars if they're a hundred percent military disabled. And next slide. We've talked about the present use value, um, there's a circuit breaker program which is similar. To the elderly from an income and age standpoint, it does expand the income level uh a little bit, that is a tax deferment. It's not an exclusion, which means it generates a lien on the property that stays there and becomes um a liability for the subsequent owner. If that person passes or, or sells the property. Next slide. So how are we getting this information out, much like we're doing tonight, unfortunately, all these meetings uh with the exception of one have been virtual. Um, we, we'd love to meet with everyone in person, but unfortunately with the, the pandemic that we're dealing with right now, we can't do that. So we've developed a, the county has developed a dedicated webpage uh for the twenty twenty-one reappraisal. Uh, we've utilized local media outlets, uh, we did interviews on Wixie uh radio here in Monroe, as well as um some interviews with local newspapers. On our webpage, there's a plethora of information that, that can be uh accessed, um, that provides a lot of good um. It answers to questions that people may have, uh, the, the town, if, if they desire, can, can link to that webpage directly. Uh, from your town webpage, there's a video that was produced uh that features the county manager, myself and, and Robin and Phil, as well as some of our staff. They talks about, it's kind of the introductory process to what we're doing and why we're doing it. Uh, again, a number of town hall meetings, and we're also meeting with uh community civic and faith-based groups over the next several weeks. I will be doing a chamber meeting as well as some uh regular club meetings as well. Just trying to get the information out there, we want everybody to be aware of what's happening, what's going on, and, and answer as many questions as we can. Uh, next slide. So this shows you just a, a snapshot of our tax base uh for the county. And twenty twenty, our total tax base was twenty-seven point eight billion. Um, that represents an annual growth rate year-over-year of three point one four percent, uh, which since twenty fifteen, actually twenty fourteen. We're averaging about three percent growth in new value each year, uh, so it says steady growth, we're not seeing the big peaks that we saw in the early two thousands. Um, when we were increasing by, by four or five thousand homes a year, as you'll see in some, some data here momentarily. Next slide. Just, this is just another graphical representation of that same data, so. Union County as a whole, our total tax base is seventy-three percent residential, I mean, y'all are well aware of that being Indian Trail, you're the largest municipality. In the county now, and, and a lot of that is driven from, from the municipal uh, from the residential market. Uh, we have a ten percent commercial industrial tax base, if you break this down to real estate only, that we are about eighty-eight percent residential uh throughout the county. Next slide. These are just some summary statistics here, um, we're averaging about seventeen hundred new parcels a year throughout the county. Uh, residential growth as far as new homes is about just under eighteen hundred per year. Um, sales, which we, which is a critical component of this process and what drives this process. We're seeing just over six thousand sales per year, they're qualified sales that we can use for valuation purposes. Compared to the commercial industrial growth, we're only seeing about sixty new parcels per year come on uh as far as new buildings and, and. Properties that, that would fall within the classification. We're going to take a brief look at our sales ratio history to kind of show you how we got to where we are in the history in Union County, this would be very brief. Uh, next slide. So this goes all the way back to nineteen eighty-six, we, we're talking about a thirty plus or minus percent uh increase in value for this year. That's not unheard of in Union County, if you go back to the nineteen ninety-two uh reappraisal, uh, that was a forty percent increase. We had another thirty percent uh in two thousand, um, and then when the county did more frequent reappraisals. In two thousand four, two thousand eight, those jumps were not quite as big. And you can see in two thousand twelve, where we actually inverted, inverted that line. Uh, for the first time, we're actually the only county, we're not the only county that went above market during that timeframe. But we're the only county that triggered a reappraisal because we were so far out of line with the market, because we had such a wide swing from two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Um, coming down that trend line, you see uh where we're at in twenty eighteen, next slide. And this just zooms in to twenty, to two thousand four to twenty twenty, and shows you where we are at the end of twenty twenty, being roughly right around seventy percent. Um, and that yellow slide, that yellow data point there of eighty-four point four eight percent, that is in two thousand eighteen. That is when we were notified by the Department of Revenue that we had to do this reappraisal. Next slide. So to wrap this up and concluding, just to hit some high points here, um, again, everything we do is transparent. We want to be equitable and fair to every taxpayer in Union County. You may not agree with the answer you get, but generally it's going to be the right answer, and if we're wrong, we'll fix it. Um, so if, if, if we send you a valuation notice, um, and you disagree with it, call us, let's talk about it, let's fix it, let's see what we can, what kind of agreement we can come to. Uh, we believe in a customer-focused process, we, we think this is a partnership with the taxpayer. Nobody knows your property as well as you do, and so we've got the best available data we can have, uh, but we may not have it all. So if there's something that, um, that you think we've got incorrect, let us know, and we'll talk about it. Again, we're, we have a heavy public information campaign that we're doing uh to get the word out. And we're utilized, heavily utilizing tech, you, you have a utilization of technology to, to make things more accessible to people. All of our databases will be online um or are online, and, and we're setting up electronic forms of communication so that people can. Submit their stuff to us without having to come to the office. With that, that's all I've got, thank you for your patience, um, if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them as best as I can at this point.
I'm going to open the floor for questions. I guess not, um, thank you for taking the time to come out and go through this. And any links, any links or information that would help get the word out. Um, if you would just share them with uh our town manager and our communications officer, uh, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've already reached out to Abby and we'll link that. I heard Van say that he lives right outside of Indian Trail, we'll be happy to talk annexation offline, bring you in as one of our citizens. And I guess the other question, great presentation, is there a way that some of that information, when you're talking about countywide? We could get some data specific to Indian Trail at some point.
So what I can do, um, huh, I think we'll, we'll have most of our values from a market value standpoint. Now, tax relief parcels will not be applied at that point, um, any kind of reductions. But I can get you your new market value probably in the next three weeks, um, so if you want to set a follow-up. Uh, just for maybe a five or ten minute update, um, we can, we can, yeah, I can get some Indian Trail specific data for you. And show you where that sits in, in relation to the county as a whole.
Mr. Mayor, unless there's objection by the board, why don't we have him provide that? I can notify y'all, and if y'all would like to have a five-minute update from Van, we can do that.
I think that would be a great idea to actually put on a regular meeting agenda.
Um, Mr. Mayor, before, before he leaves, I just have one request. Um, I noticed that he gave, um, um, he gave an example of, I think it was a low use, if I'm not, or your low utilization. Is there any way he can probably provide, because m- most people that may tune in from Indian Trail to this meeting on that particular topic. Would probably own a home, is there any way you can give us an example of sort of what the twenty sixteen valuation was? And I know it's, it does, it's not going to be specific, but just an example. And what if it went up by about thirty percent, what the new tax rate could be if everything kind of stayed the same in terms of the tax rate? Is there any way you can provide that for us at the next meeting? Or that's.
So. What I, what I, what I'll provide is from a snapshot standpoint for Indian Trails, we'll do a before and after uh snapshot for you. Uh, your total tax base before, your median home value before, and then we'll do your total tax base now and median home value uh with the new valuation. I will not go into your tax rate discussion, that is, that is strictly a, a board discussion and a finance officer discussion, we will not speculate on that at all. Um, so that's part of your budget process, um, but I'll be glad.
No, no. Sorry, so uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, I apologize, I wasn't saying that the tax rate for Indian Trail really, I was more or less looking at it from the countywide standpoint. Um, so in other words, let's say we had a house in Indian Trail, but valued at two, two hundred thousand dollars. The tax rate on it from the county was six percent on two thousand, it's going to buy it to two fifty in value now. Still seven, six percent tax rate, new tax will be X, that's what I was asking, but if that's something that you can go into, I totally understand.
Right, yeah, I can't speculate on the tax rate, um, that, that, that's beyond the purview of my office. Uh, that would cause, that would actually cause some complications on our end. Um, so I, I prefer not to do that part, but I can definitely show you before and after valuation pictures.
Thank you.
But that would be appreciated if you can do that.
Okay, I'll reach out to um, uh, Mr. McLaurin and let him know when we have that available and get scheduled on your next available meeting after that.
Thank you, Van, for taking the uh time to come here this evening.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
A motion to close.
Yes, uh, well, motion, I mean, is this a formal meeting, motion to close?
It is regular.
Okay, well, then we'll need a motion to close this meeting, please.
So moved.
So that sounded like Jerry, since he lit up, Mr. Morse made that motion. Um, all in favor, Mr. McIntyre?
Agreed.
Mr. Cohen?
I do.
Mr. Barber? He's on mute, it appears. Um, and uh, Mr. Head?
Approved.
Okay, you back, Todd?
Yeah, approved.
Okay, that's unanimous, we have about eight minutes, I guess we're going to stay on the same link?
Yes, thank you, we'll stay on the same link.
Okay, everybody can stay logged in if you want to take a quick break. Um, so uh, at this time, I'd like to call this meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council uh for January twenty-six to order. Uh, so we're, we're going to do, um, should I do roll before we do pledge?
Uh, yes, start, please.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre?
I'm here, so present.
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Head?
Present.
Mr. Barber?
Present.
And Mr. Morris?
Present.
Okay, all present and accounted for, so at this time, um. I guess I'll start, what was that?
Mr. McLaurin and Mayor, do you want red staff roll call, we typically do.
Oh, yes, please do the staff roll call, sorry, Kathy.
Okay, um, Town Manager Mike McLaurin. Present, he's here, I see him, um, Attorney Karen.
I'm here, uh, Jim Wadwitz.
Jim Wadwitz. Jim, speak up when you get your computer turned on. Carrie Warner?
Present.
Adam McLam?
Actually, Kathy, that's not going to work. They're, they're attendees and they're not up and to where they can speak.
Can you see, uh, can you?
Yeah, sorry, say that again.
Can you speak for them if I call them?
Yes.
Jim Wadwitz. Carrie. Todd. Randy Hayden. Brandy and then Hayden. Alicia. Massey, and then Kathy and Abby, all present?
Tim Jones is on as well.
Tim Jones, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Tim Jones here for the present.
Okay. Bear with me, my earpiece seems to be going in and out.
I think that was, it was going in and out. We couldn't hear her.
Oh, okay, thought it was me. I kept tapping my head. Okay, at this time, I'll start with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States of America. And to the republic. Which stands one nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty. And justice for all. This time, if we would take a few seconds, create a moment of silence and reflection. Thank you. Kathy, first item on the agenda?
First item on the agenda is for Mr. McIntyre to make an addition for the additions and deletions.
Okay, okay, here we are. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's meeting? Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, sir, I have one addition. Want to add old business item ninety, old Monroe Road construction update.
Okay, are there any objections? Hmm, are there any other additions or deletions at this time? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve amended agenda.
Motion was made by, uh, Mr. McIntyre. Mr. Head?
Approved.
Mr. Barber?
Approved.
Mr. Morse?
Approved.
And Mr. Cohen?
Approved.
Okay. At this time, we have three presentations. Has Mr. Simpson arrived yet?
Yes, he has. Give me one second to move them up to panelist.
Okay. Just let us know.
Uh, when you see him, just make sure he can hear you before you begin speaking, Mayor Rivers.
I will do that, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
You can.
Thank you. I always feel like I have to scream when I'm on these things and learning to lower my voice.
Now, so they can speak.
Okay, Randy's here?
Yes.
Hi, Randy, how you doing tonight? Good. Uh, we're, we're bringing you here tonight to, uh, just thank you for your service to Indian Trail and not just Indian Trail, but the, the county. For those of you that know, know, Randy has the tree farm and the fruit stand that's on Old Monroe Road across from Dollar Tree. And, uh, he's never missed a beat when it came to Indian Trail. I'm sure Hayden can speak in, uh, in conjunction with this when we've had parades and events. Randy's always been there donating trees to the town for Christmas. Many fundraisers that I've had for residents of the surrounding area and anyone that's ever come to him, Randy's never said no. He's been here day in and day out, year after year, and really is a staple in this town. And we're blessed and honored to have you, Randy, in Indian Trail. And I'm also honored to call you my friend and get to know you over the years. And we just wanted to show our appreciation by just, I wanted to just bring you in, give you a little, give you a plaque and thank you. It's the, to let you know, all your efforts don't go unnoticed. And you're very loved in the community and very appreciated from, I believe I can speak for our town council and our town staff, uh, for all that you do.
I certainly appreciate, appreciate this opportunity and, and this award. I appreciate the town working with me and allowing me to do business in the town of Indian Trail. It's always been my home. I grew up just right below my little market there at, uh, what is now known as Brandon Oaks. And, uh, Indian Trail has always been my home, even though I don't live there now. But thank you all and thank you all very much.
Oh, it's definitely our pleasure. We thank you for taking the time and it's unfortunate we couldn't be there in person. So when this pandemic starts to calm down and everybody's allowed back out, we'll bring you back in and have you come over to a, a meeting at your convenience just to recognize you in person.
I certainly appreciate it and appreciate you, Michael, and all our town members and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Anybody have anything to say before Randy, uh, tunes us out?
Oh, this is Todd Barber. I just want to say congratulations. Uh, I've watched Randy donate to the church so we could have, help us have a vacation Bible school and the pumpkins and things. And some people are just a business in the community, but he's an asset and serves the community. And I just want to say congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mi- Michael, I'd like to say thank you to Randy too. I, I see him out there selling Christmas trees, but his, all the other small things that he does for the town and, uh, you know, it comes from being a genuine person. And, uh, Todd, uh, Randy, this is David Cohen, and I just want to thank you for all you do.
Thank you, David. You need to stop by more often.
That would mean he'd have to go across that seventy-four U-turns of no return.
I appreciate it all and thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Marcus here. Mr. Simpson, thank you very much for your dedicated service to the town. Echoing what both David and, and Todd said. You know, you're a real asset to our town. And every time, you know, there's a, a need, you've been able to fill that. So we really do appreciate all that you do. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you, Mr. McIntyre. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else, we'll let Mr. Simpson tune us out and get back to fun stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to, uh, Citizens of the Corner Quarter. Quarter, uh, Francis and Michael Knight, are they on Abby?
She has to take a moment to move them up. And meanwhile, the plaque for them is up.
We're all.
They're here.
Hi, Francis, how you doing? It's Michael.
Good, Michael, how about you?
I'm doing well. I assume Michael's with you?
Yep. I'm here.
Okay. Okay, uh, as you know, the town council has initiated Citizens of the Quarter to recognize those that have gone above and beyond for our town. And, uh, you're, the both of you were a unanimous choice for all you do during the holidays and, and, and throughout the year and, and past, uh, volunteering for the town. I'm going to go ahead and read this one since I can actually, I can see it. Francis and Michael Knight learn the values of helping others and giving back to the community at a young age. Francis is a native of Roade Hisse, North Carolina, and was taught by her parents to be involved and to fix, find ways to help people if they needed it. Michael grew up in Pageant, South Carolina, and followed in his parents' footsteps of being active in the community. Francis and Michael, who moved to Indian Trail in nineteen ninety-five, have found nuver, numerous ways to give back to and serve others since locating here. Theirs was the thirty-fourth home built in Brandon Oaks, and they were instrumental in forming the first HOA board. Additionally, Francis was on the pool and social committees. And Michael played Santa Claus for the neighborhood for several years. When the daughter, when her daughter was in school, the Knights were active in the PTA and youth activities at the Faith Baptist Church in Monroe, where they have been members since nineteen seventy-eight. They have also been members of the Greater Monroe Lions Club since nineteen ninety-nine. In addition to civic organizations, Francis and Michael also served on town committees. Francis served on the safety committee and Michael on the transportation committee. The Knights are both retired and still live in Brandon Oaks. They continue to be active in the community and their church. They say the best, they say the best part about community service is seeing the happiness on people's faces. Indian Trail appreciates their commitment to helping others and are honored and are honored. We are honored to name them the Citizens of the Quarter for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty. You know, Francis and Michael, there's no words for what you do for this community and what you continue to do. And on a personal basis, you're always there to volunteer for whatever fundraiser I, I put together and go above and beyond. And it's, it's appreciated. Thank you very much for all you do. You definitely raise the bar and inspire us all. Is there anyone that would like to say anything?
I just, say, Michael, this is David Cohen.
Yes, sir, David.
I've, I've known you ever since I've been on council and, um, I've relied on you many times and you've always been there when, when I've needed you. And I remember when you did the, uh, Public Safety Committee and, uh, you've just always been there for the town and it's well-deserved and congratulations. And, uh, it's a pleasure to, uh, to know you and it's a, a honor to have you here in Indian Trail.
Mr. Barber?
Oh, yes, uh, I just, I'd like to say one is, uh, when I got, became president of the Indian Trail Lions Club, I was honored to be sworn in by Francis. It, it was a great honor and to be sworn in by such quality, uh, people. I've watched them be part of the Lions Club, uh, Mike being Santa Claus. They down there helping at the Christmas party for the VIP local line, uh, blind people here in Union County. And, um, I mean, it's just really well-deserved. You know, some people walk, some people talk, but the Knights walk the, walk the talk when it comes to helping people. Uh, I admire people that are always willing to help less fortunate and reach out and give of themselves. I'm honored to know you and well-deserve, well-deserved Citizen of the Quarter. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Morse.
Yeah, um, hi, Francis, Michael, this is Jerry. You two are definitely true, two truly deserving people of this award. Yeah, I met you when you were on the safety committee doing the animal ordinance. And, uh, ever since then, we've been, been friends. Every year, Christmas time, you know, we expect Mr. and Ms. Claus to show up and you never disappoint. Always in the parades and you really are a fixture of our community and, and I'm, I'm proud to serve you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Any other council members?
Mayor, um, yeah, to, uh, to Mike and Francis Knight, thank you for all you do and all you have done for Indian Trail, and we appreciate you. Love you.
Yeah, and, uh, just want to say to both Francis and Michael, it's, uh, citizens like you who really do, um, help put our town and make our town better. Thank you for all the things that you've done for our town and continue to do. We really do appreciate it.
Any words, uh, Michael or Francis, in closing?
Yes. Thank you so much, each of you. My head is getting to swell a little bit here for all the nice comments. We appreciate it. And we do enjoy the town. We do like to see things progress. There's a few things I would change, and I was very disappointed when, decided the safety committee and those committees were not needed. But that's something you might want to reconsider sometime down the line. But I appreciate each of you giving your time and for all that you do to help Indian Trail become what it's become. Mike?
It's been my pleasure. If you've never played Santa Claus, you don't know what it feels like. Hold those little kids in your arms and them tell you what they want for Christmas and everything. Hug you and everything. It is unbelievable and I have thoroughly enjoyed it and hope to continue in the future. And I love this town. I love it to death. This is, I couldn't have asked for a better place to live.
Well, Michael, it's a tough job when you have to take those lists from those children and then pass it on to Santa Claus. How you keep it organized, I'll never know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I think everybody summed everything up. There's really no words to express all you've done and how we all feel about the two of you. And, uh, it's, it's, it's humbling to know people like you. It's kind of hard to, uh, walk in your footsteps, but we'll continue to try.
Well, I, I just have one last thing to say. You know where I'm at. If you need me, all you've got to do is call.
I know that. You can always be my right-hand man there when we do cooking. Yes, please. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. So, um, Kathy, what's next on the agenda? If you can pull that up. Ah. That's a presentation? Okay. Mr. McLaurin?
He's on mute, Mr. McLaurin.
You're muted.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, before Patrick Nylund begins his, uh, presentation on the Union County CDBG program. Tonight, we would like you to receive this as information. Uh, we'll make a recommendation that the town agree to participate with Union County under the CDBG program. We might not have that many projects that are eligible, but you never know. And assuming at the conclusion of his presentation, if you would like us to move forward, at that point, we will schedule a formal presentation at a future meeting. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. McLaurin.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thanks, Mike. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. Can everyone hear me okay?
I can.
One of my responsibilities with the county is to administer the CDBG program. Next slide, please. CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. It's a federally funded program through HUD. And it provides money for housing and community development. Union County is what is called an entitlement agency. So any urban county that has over two hundred thousand people in population can apply to be an entitlement community. And what that means is we get a direct allocation from the feds every year. Funds are available to Union County and the consortium members. Monroe, Wingate, Marshville, Waxahaw, Stallings, and Weddington are the current municipal members. Only low to moderate income projects qualify. And I'll go into what that means here on the next slide, please. We are in what's considered the Charlotte Concord Gastonia Metro Free Market or Fair Market Rent area. So they take the low to moderate income census data in that whole area to determine what our thresholds are. What you're looking at here is, and I, I ask you, if, bottom line, a family of four that makes less than sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars a year is considered a low to moderate income family. You can see the scale goes in both directions depending on the number of individuals in the house. So an elderly couple maybe is, is a good reference point. If they make less than fifty-three thousand dollars a year, they would qualify for this program. Uh, next slide, please. What can be funded? Acquisition of real property. If you wanted to acquire land for a park or a public facility, you could use this program for that. Clearance and demolition. If you have some dilapidated buildings, you can use this money to help, uh, beautify neighborhoods. Rehabilitation of residential structures, public facilities, infrastructure, water and sewer improvements, streets, sidewalks, that sort of thing. Code enforcement, which kind of ties back to the, uh, clearance and demolition. You have some properties that do have some code enforcement issues. You can use this money to try to help get those corrected. Public services and then certain economic development activities can be used. Next slide. What has been funded? We are in the tail end of our first five years in this program. The first five years have focused mainly on infrastructure projects. And that was a directive of the county commissioners at the time. They wanted us to try to focus on infrastructure projects. I I was with the town of Wingate when this program was implemented. Um, City Monroe has a, a pretty large sidewalk project that has been funded through this program. When I was in Wingate, we had waterline projects, a sewer outfall project and sidewalk projects. Uh, Waxahaw had a sidewalk project, Town Marshville Water and Sewer Projects, and then Union County, we've had some uh, infrastructure projects at well, as well. Excuse me. Because we were in this program, we received what was called CWGCV money and that was related to COVID. Um, so you can see a lot of the programs we were able to fund by being a, a member of this program. Crisis Assistance, Crisis Assessment, the Homeless Shelter, Attorney Point, Hawthorne, Monroe, Lowe's and Fishes, Council on Aging, Council, Council on Aging in the UC Wick Program. So a, a lot of good has gone into the community because we are a member of this program. Uh, next slide. Why should Indian Trail participate? Indian Trail participation would increase the annual allocation to Union County. The, when they look at allocations, they look at how many people in the jurisdictions are participating in this program. So if Union County said they wanted to participate, your population would be counted toward our annual allocation. Uh, Monroe and Indian Trail are the two largest and Indian Trail being the largest municipality. So if Indian Trail was willing to participate, it'd be a pretty substantial bump to the annual allocation. Part of this program reduces the administrative burden. Because this is a federal program and it's run through HUD, there's a lot of administrative requirements. There's a lot of red tape to get through. We contract with the Central Indiana Council Government to do most of that. They have the contacts and the expertise to walk us through the federal procurement and federal reporting. Um, it, it allows you to work with the county to identify citizens in your town that could possibly qualify for projects. Uh, one of the things I mentioned that this money can be used for is, is housing repair. So um, if you have an individual that's low to moderate income that has a failing well, we could work with you to try to get that homeowner uh, some funds to help him correct that. And there is no financial commitment from the town. I'll say that with an asterisk. You are not going to get an invoice from the town of Wing, or for the, from Union County for anything we do. Um, there are certain towns that have used CDBG as a supplement to a program they already have. So the City Monroe Sidewalk Project, they are putting a lot of money into itself, into it themselves and getting CDBG funds. You do not have to do that. You could apply for projects based on a hundred percent funding. So there's, there's no match requirement to the town and there is no annual fee that has to be paid to the town. There are two ways you can qualify projects. You can qualify them by census block or you can qualify them by individual owners. Uh, Indian Trail unfortunately does not have any area in the town that qualifies by census tract. But you probably do have some areas of low to moderate income individuals that would qualify. Uh, so projects like stormwater, sidewalk, um, street repairs, parks in those areas, those are type of projects that would qualify. And why shouldn't you? There's really only one downside to this program to the town. And that is you cannot directly apply to the state for funding. If you agree to be a member of this program, you're free. Now that's, that's only as good as you all want to stay in the program. At any point, you can withdraw your support from this program, roll down on your own. But there are some pretty substantial administrative uh, requirements that come along with this program. Um, so as, as Mike stated early, what we're hoping is that you can buy into this program and be a member of this group. Because it would increase our allocation and we can work with Mike and staff to try to identify projects in Indian Trail where your citizens would benefit from some of this funding. So with that, I'm, I'm going to hush and any questions you all may have, I'm more than happy to answer.
Are there any questions? Mr. McLaurin, did you want to add anything to this? You're on mute. There you go.
On mute. There you go. I, I think it's, I think it's something the town needs to participate in. You, Patrick has hit a couple uh, uh, trigger words that we've all talked about here. Um, sidewalks being one, stormwater being one, um, water and sewer being one. And he is correct. The CDBG applications, when I was at COG, was a very laborious process. And so by participating, I guess, with the county, then we kind of leverage our resources because we add another 40,000 folks to the, to the pot being considered. And as Patrick said, you get more money, or the county would. And um, also the COG uh, is developing an expertise. So the key with that would be, I would think, is that we would agree to participate. Staff would work with the county to see if there are projects that uh, might have some possibilities. There may be some years where there are no projects. There may be several that, you know, we might have a project or two. And it's all based on a point scale basis. So I can't think of any downside, but um, uh, unless there's objection from the board, once they get, you know, if you want to move forward, once we get documentation, we will uh, let Karen review it and we will uh, schedule it for consideration by this board.
Okay, Karen, is a consensus okay to move forward?
Yeah, McIntyre says yes.
Yes, yes, sir. Consensus is just fine.
Okay. Mr. Barber, I know you're on mute. Um, or we lost him there for a minute. So Mr. Head?
Yes, we should participate.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
And uh, Mr. Cone? Okay, Todd, did you get the presentation?
Yes.
You okay moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, the only one I didn't hear from was Mr. Cone. Oh, I didn't hear you, you sound in the distance there. Okay. Mr. McLaurin, it's, it's a unanimous consensus to go ahead and move forward with this.
All right, then we'll wait for Patrick to get us the paperwork. And Patrick says you do, we'll send it over to our attorney and then schedule it for a meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time tonight and thank you for the support.
Thank you. Kathy, next on the agenda?
Uh, next on the agenda is um, public comments. I don't have any public comments except for the one that you received.
Okay, I'll, I will open with that, uh, public comment period. Um, Susan Dunkle on 3516 Selway Drive. And bear with me as I scroll through this. I would like to request additional consideration for garbage haulers that are picking up in the industrial areas that are adjacent to residential homes in the overnight, in the overnight hours. Throughout the years, I have voiced concern directly at a town hall meeting, spoken directly to town managers, both past and present. I have also contacted garbage, the contacted garbage hauler companies directly to voice concern and resolve this 20-year issue, but to no long-term s- solution. All I can personally get to is the customer service rep who may or may not pass along my complaint and contact info. Therefore, nothing is done. Currently Mondays at three to 3:30 AM and Tuesdays two to 3:00 AM, haulers are coming through and banging these large metal bins. It wakes you from a dead sleep and you just cannot recover. You hear all of this with windows shut and the heat and or AC running. I am currently upgrading to a three-pane window with the attempts to muffle some of this. But come mild weather, it would be nice to sleep with the windows ajar. At that time, it will be like the haulers is in the bottom, is in the bedroom with me. I have gotten in my car and taken pictures to document the haulers. But where these pickups are now, there is no way for me to make all of the appropriate U-turns to accomplish the same as I could, could do when they were eventually arrived in the technology office park. If the town can pass ordinances to require permits door-to-door salesmen for our safety and peace of mind, why can't ordinance be passed to not allow haulers to operate prior to 7:00 AM? All of these industrial areas are sandwiched in between the neighborhoods and vice versa. It just makes sense to not pick up until a reasonable hour. It seems that the town is striving for the hometown feel, but between midnight and 5:00 AM, it is an entirely different story. But when the haulers stop coming through, that is when Harris Teeter starts with their beeping at 4:30 AM. Um, council, if you weren't part of the pre, uh, when Ms. McLaurin sent this to me, uh, he had voiced that he and Adam are looking into possible ordinances and solutions to this. And he will get back to the resident. So since there's no other comments for public comments, I'll go to council, feedback the public comments. Mr. Cone, do you have any?
I do not.
Mr. McIntyre?
I do not.
Mr. Barber?
Oh, I appreciate the citizen bringing it to our attention and I appreciate, oh, Mr. McLaurin getting the staff to look into what we can do about it. Uh, I think, I think, yeah, I think that's the right thing to do. Hmm, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Morse?
I agree with Mr. Barber. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Head?
Ditto.
Okay, uh, that brings us to Captain James and a law enforcement update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Can you, everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
I really don't have a whole lot for you. We're trucking right along. Everything seems to be going very good. Um, spending a lot of time in the communities are, seems that we're still on that trend of uh, with our car breaking and entering's going down. Uh, however, our, we've had some commercial robberies here in the last month and a half that uh, seem to be a strain. But the, we, our investigators do have some leads on those and they're working those uh, every day. Um, our closure rates are still really good, um, with anything that's going on here in town. So um, like I said, we um, just trucking right along. Does anybody have any questions for me?
There, McIntyre?
No, sir. Thank you, Captain.
Mr. Barber?
I was just wondering if the things over at Kate's Gate have found to calm down or if your deputies have learned how to get on roller blades and chase everybody or maybe if you, I just wonder if things have calmed down. Hmm.
I, I haven't had any more conversations with Mr. Thompson and I haven't heard of be, any more issues.
That's good. That's good news. Thank you.
You, uh, Mr. Head?
Uh, Captain, I just want to thank you for um, alerting uh, this area uh, about the, the uh, dynamite uh, that would be going on and also um, the efforts in the uh, in getting the, the, I guess, the homesteader over on uh, Poplin and uh, Indian Trail Unionville Road um, out of the area.
You're act, you're actually praising the wrong one. I can point you to your planning department is the one that led that up. That we just received a phone call and we took, we took care of it.
Well, thanks to uh, to the planning department as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morse?
Nothing at this time.
Uh, did I get everybody, Mr. Cone?
No, you, you didn't get me.
Okay.
Just, just thank you for all you do. Appreciate you, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Stay, stay safe, Cap. Stay safe, Captain. Thanks for the update.
Mr. Mayor, before um, Captain James gets away from us, uh, your traffic guys working the right turn on red onto the super street. I was out today and saw a bunch of them and I heard from one of my board members that people seem to be just zipping right through it.
If, if there's not a, a law enforcement vehicle sitting within eye shot of the intersection, you're going to see it. The uh, it's, it's an everyday issue. If we can, if we could leave a car at the intersections 24 hours a day, they, they would get, actually get tired of cutting their lights on.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. I'll need a motion to approve if there's no objection.
So moved.
Was that you, Mr. Head?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Head made the motion. All in favor, Mr. Cone?
Approved.
Mr. Barber?
Approved.
Mr. Morse?
Agreed.
And Mr. McIntyre?
Approved.
Kathy, that was uh, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to public hearing, UDO public hearing. Uh, Mr. Jones is going to take that, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, hi, Brandy.
Good evening, Mayor.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is the hearing for the Unified Development Ordinance 160D and staff updates. Let's see, yeah, thank you. Uh, in general, what is the U, UDO? Uh, the ordinance, Unified Development Ordinance for the town, or we call it the UDO, is not only a guide for quality development, but also to advance the town towards their vision for the future. For those who approach us, residents, businesses, developers, we suggest that they come to us so we can help guide them through that document. The UDO contains various divisions such as zoning districts and allowed uses, powers and duties, subdivisions, parking and landscaping, to name a few. Next slide, please. Thank you. Uh, the updates to the UDO are, UDO are for two main purposes. To include the revisions for the new chapter 160D and to make necessary revisions put forward by staff. Uh, for 160D, the purpose for the updates, uh, the ordinance changes for the statutes, combine city and county portions of the development regulations as well as clarifying language. Uh, 160D is effective now, uh, but the town has a July 1st deadline this year to adopt. All the communities have that deadline. And then the second that I mentioned, the staff updates were needed for some time and include policy changes, clarifying language in the current UDO and some administrative changes. Next slide, please. The uh, University of North Carolina uh, School of Government played an important role uh, for local government communities by summarizing the 160D revisions into a booklet with a checklist. A year ago, several planning staff attended the UNC School of Government Training, um, on the 160D revisions. The checklist is divided up into changes that we must make, we may make, or changes to be aware of. Next slide. Uh, this just shows the UNC checklist outline. This is a framework of the checklist uh, that the school government provided to help communities determine what edits to make. The sections included topics such as terminology, uh, boards and various sections on types of decisions. Next slide, please. This is a sample page uh, showing the amendments uh, to the document itself with the proposed edits in red. The UDO table of contents, any, and any numbering is not considered substantive or like policy material. Uh, just the language and the new images that are proposed are, are, are what's of substance that's uh, being approved or disapproved. Next slide. So we get towards the uh, whether it was consistent or not. Um, and the consistency with the request, it was consistent uh, with the town's comprehensive plan. A public meeting was held by the planning board on November 17th, 2020 to consider this text amendment. And the planning board found the proposed map amendment is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan and recommended approval. The specific goals uh, relating to the consistence, which we can, as you vote on it, you can say, as read by staff. Well, I'll quickly go through them. They turn out to be goals, land use and housing goals, one, two, three, and six. Goal number one, uh, land use and housing goal, by promoting a mix of different types of land uses within each village and avoid potential land use conflicts between neighboring properties and surrounding municipalities. Uh, goal number two, by providing a diverse range of housing options, including varying densities of single-family, multifamily, traditional neighborhood development and mixed-use communities in order to provide affordable living opportunities for a wide range of residents. Goal number, land use and housing goal number three, by improving existing Indian Trail neighborhoods to create strong and vibrant communities. And finally, land use goal number six, by coordinating with land development stakeholders to help create an effective and predictable land development process that will encourage investment in the community. So the final item is, uh, will be for the next meeting. The requested action after this hearing is uh, to vote on the consistency findings and for the request for ZT 2020 dash zero one two one for the text amendment.
Okay, so is that all, Mr. Jones?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, um, since this is a public since this is a public hearing, uh, Karen, do we take public comments now, if there were any?
Yes.
Are there any, Kathy, did you receive any?
Public hearing.
What was that, Kathy?
Open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me open the public hearing. And, uh, at this time, and, uh, I forgot to do that. And, uh, were there any public comments to you, Kathy?
No, there were no comments.
Brandy, did you receive any?
No, sir. We did not receive any.
Okay. At this particular moment, Council, do you have any, does anyone have any questions or comments in regards to this? Okay, Karen, this works like the, the last one. This is open till February 9th?
No, we, those areas, what you'll do is you will close the public hearing tonight. And then the town's required to accept comment for the next 24 hours on this topic and then you all will be able to take action at the next board meeting.
Okay, so I will close at this time, then I will close the public hearing if there's no discussion. And we will move this to, we'll accept, ah, public comments for the next 24 hours and move the action to the meeting on February 9th.
Did you close?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
That brings us to old business, item A, Williams Pond Consideration. Brandy, are you handling that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The public hearing for annexation 158 and conditional zoning 2020 oh 100 was held during our January 12 town council meeting. Um, due to recently adopted state laws surrounding COVID, action must be taken no sooner than 24 hours following the public hearing. Tonight, the request is before you for consideration. For the consistency statements, I will reread that into the record, uh, for your convenience when referring to it for the vote. Staff finds that CZ 2020 zero one zero zero is a reasonable request and is consistent with the existing and current development occurring in Rogers Village. The proposed conditional rezoning request is consistent with the land use and housing in goal number one contained within the comprehensive plan. This goal promotes a mix of different types of land uses within each village and avoids potential land use conflicts between neighboring properties and surrounding municipalities. As a reminder, planning board recommended approval of this request with the condition that the existing pond be aerated with a fountain. Council may choose to retain this condition, remove this condition, or add additional conditions upon the applicant's consent. We do have a signed written consent for the existing conditions imposed on this project. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have and Miss Sarah Shirley with American Engineering is representing the applicant tonight. Thank you.
Marcus, do you have any questions?
No, sir. I do not have any questions, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Cone?
No questions.
Mr. Head? I can't hear him. Mike, you still with us?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. No questions.
That's okay. And Mr. Morse?
No questions.
Okay, uh, were there any additional public comments received during?
Mayor, I just, can I, can I just get clarification from Brandy? Um, so can I, do I understand that we have written a, a consent of the applicant for the aerating of the pond? That additional condition that was requested by planning board?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the applicant has agreed to that and that is part of the, the written document that, that they have signed.
Excellent. Thank you. Just wanted to confirm.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Brandy, Kathy, were there any additional public comments?
No, Mayor.
Comments and, uh, Brandy, that is new ordinance. Hi, do I need to be provided that?
Mission?
Uh, you, you should, you should already have that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further public comments, uh, there should be a couple of motions that need to be motioned upon. Sorry, this is the first virtual meeting back and, uh, getting used to it's getting, is a little difficult, so, um, would, would anyone like to make the first, I guess, the consistency findings?
Do we need an annexation motion?
Yeah, okay, the annexation first, sorry. We need a motion to, uh, adopt or deny the annexation for number one five eight.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion. I want to make a motion to adopt the annexation of number one five eight.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to adopt. Mr. Head?
Approved.
Mr. Cone?
Approved.
Mr. Barber?
Uh, question, he, uh, the mayor pro temp did say adopt, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, approve. Yes.
And, okay, Mr. Morse?
Approved.
Okay, let the record show that was unanimous. Kathy?
I got it. Thank you.
Now we need the, uh, two rezoning request motions.
So I'll may, I'll go ahead and take those as well, or take that one too. I'd like to, for the consistency findings, to adopt the statement of consistency as consistent as read into the record for CZ two zero two zero dash zero one zero zero by staff on January 12th, twenty twenty one. Today's January twenty twenty six though, but.
That's fine, January twenty sixth because she reread them into the record.
Okay, well, sorry, uh, let's strike that last part and say January twenty six, twenty twenty one.
Okay, Mr. Um, McIntyre has made the motion to adopt the statement of consistency. Mr. Head?
Approved.
Mr. Cone?
Approved.
Mr. Barber?
Approved.
Mr. Morse?
Approved.
Let the record show that was also unanimous. Kathy?
Got it.
Mr. McIntyre, you want to go three for three?
Yeah, I'll take that one too. Um, the rezoning request to approve the rezoning request CZ two zero two zero dash zero one zero zero, ordinance number zero two one zero one one two dash three four five. And with the additional conditions as stated, um, I think, uh, Ms. D's did mention that there are some signed, um, conditions, uh, related to the planning board request for the, the pond to have some sort of watch of water feature. Am I mistaken or is that accurate?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. So, yes, sir, that is my motion there.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve. Mr. Cone? He said, he said, what was that, David?
Approved.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you, Mr. Barber.
Approved.
Mr. Morse?
Approved.
And Mr. Head?
Approved.
Kathy, that was also unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, let me pull up my stuff here. That brings us to
nine B.
Nine B, okay, approval of neighborhood traffic calming policy. Mr. Hunsinger, you on with us?
Yes, Mayor, Council, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, we wanted to bring us these two po, policies. The first one would be the ne, neighborhood traffic common policy, bring it back to you because we, it's been a while. We discussed this back in December 8th meeting and due to long break and everything, I wanted to just rehash, um, you know, the differences, uh, the revisions where we're wanting to do as staff. Um, and so, uh, real quick, just going to go over those. Got any additional questions? We have to answer them. Um, basically, the purpose of this policy was basically revise the policy, uh, certain sections, you know, to make it less cumbersome on the citizen and to basically create more simple and fair procedures and straightforward policy. Next slide. And so basically, I just set this little simple table and just basically showed you, uh, the differences between, uh, the, the key points that we made changes for. One was the representative requirements. Basically, you have a, what we call a neighborhood representative that would come and apply for the, uh, to do the, the traffic study. And, uh, and so we wanted to, um, uh, re, uh, not create so many tasks for that neighborhood representative, especially if they don't have an uh, it's a little too, you know, again, too cumbersome. We really haven't been really going by the policy as far as making these people go through, uh, o, other tasks. We basically made them do the petition. So really what we're recommending as far as tonight is basically what we've been doing since the last few years. So, um, we changed that. So basically the property owner would go do a petition and if there's an HOA in the, in, uh, the subject has HOA, then they would be, do one more step. They would do the petition and they would do a, uh, bring the subject matter up to the board at a board meeting and we would just basically verify that those get the meeting minutes and verify it's been talked about and the board approves of the, the location if warranted. The other thing was there was a type one, type two option throughout the policy and we don't do the temporary speed humps anymore. Um, they were too costly and so we're basically removing that option out. Uh, and then just basically type two basically takes, takes over that and type two is basically going straight to the permanent speed humps. Uh, once we do the study and, and if it was warranted, uh, basically we would contact Sheriff's Department, let them know first that there is a speeding issue along that street. While, while they monitor it, we would obviously get, uh, through that time period, we would get, you know, the contract or whatever to get the speed humps in. Or whatever track, other type of common measure we feel may not be, may be warranted besides the speed hunt. And that's, that's basically it. Uh, and again, the, the step by step part of the policy really hadn't changed. It's just taking some of the stuff out. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? No, you can continue, Todd.
All right, so again, if y'all have any questions, uh, we're going to probably just, again, put this on the consent agenda for next meeting for approval. So, uh, we, we can go to the next policy. All right, streets have this policy. Again, we're, we're trying to simplify. We have, uh, with the help, me and Karen looked at this policy together and it's like it was eight pages long and we basically cut it in half. Uh, we, again, we're simplifying it. We're taking certain sections out as far as acceptance procedures, make it more, uh, straightforward for the property owner to be able to read and, and, and follow. I think the other um, policy, the existing policy is, is a little confusing. So again, trying to make it straightforward as possible. Next slide. And again, same type of table. Just wanted to show you key points, differences. Um, you know, if it's, you know, private streets, uh, again, we're not trying to upgrade them to town standards. Uh, we will take basically, uh, from the existence of the recommended policy. We're just going to take the existing road as is and just make recommended improvements as needed. And so that's one change. The other change is the formula itself, uh, but existing formula was based on life cycles, PCR ratings. Well, if you've got a private street, we don't have a PCR rating for that. Uh, that's not how our survey worked, so, uh, it, it just didn't fit the way the, the way the po, uh, the way, the way we want to run the policy and the way we have been running policy. Changing that formula to go with basically the state statutes, uh, and following those and then street categories. Uh, the policy, the existing policy basically went and specified residential, commercial DOT. Now we've changed those subcategories to, uh, special assessment district, which is what the property owner would come in for, if they had a private street they were living on. Um, and then DOT and newly constructed streets would be a different category. So you have one with lumped in with HOA and developer. If they have streets, streets out there that, that are private, they would go through a, a certain step, uh, and do this, uh, basically the same process we're doing now, which is we would make them do an assessment report, payment corps, stuff like that, if we didn't know the, uh, the condition of the streets and all that. And we all would go through all that policy and, and work with them through that, that section. And then at the end, if it's DOT streets and the applicant comes, comes in and says, look, we got DOT streets, we want you to take those over. Then, like we've been talking to y'all about for years, we've tried to work DOT to get them to us, uh, uh, come up with some funding before we take the streets over. Well, the policy basically states that out. Basically states that, look, we're going to notify DOT that you're asking us to take over your streets and they're willing to go through the process, we'll be happy to do that. But if they're not willing to contribute, then, you know, we can obviously terminate the application at that point. Uh, and that's about it. Um, if you, you might have any questions about that policy?
I muted myself. I fell for it. Um, any questions? All right, no, Todd, there's no questions.
That's what I like to hear. So, okay, like I said, you'll see this on the consent agenda in February and, uh, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
You too.
That brings us to item D, the Old Monroe Road construction update. Mr. McIntyre, you want to take that?
Yeah, I want to take that. Um, just want to, um, just give a sort of a brief, brief update. Um, last week I had a call with a gentleman from NC DOT. His name was Brett Canight. Um, I, I spoke to him last, um, Tuesday, which was the day before our CRTPO meeting because one of the things I've been trying to do is, um, get, just sort of see if there's any movement on that road. I know that prior to, um, or just around COVID, um, all projects were put on hold because of funding and so forth. So in speaking to Mr. Canight last week, he did tell me that the state has about one billion in funding for various road projects around the state of North Carolina. With Monroe Road being one of the projects that could possibly start with right away acquisition towards the second half of the year. He asked me what the town's position is because I have raised, um, this on several occasions at the CRTPO meeting in that the town of Indian Trail has committed $5 million to the project's construction. We actually started back in 2011 and I'm not going to go back that far, but, um, that being said, um, the town has already paid $1 million and we are supposed to pay another million dollars, I think on July 1st, 2021, if I'm not mistaken. So I did, you know, tell him that how can I go back to the voters and the residents within Indian Trail and tell them that we should, you know, give up more money whereas there's no movement on the road. So he did receive those comments, um, from me. And what he told me is that, um, they, meaning NC DOT, would like to move forward with the project, but they want to know if Indian Trail is still committed. And while I haven't, you know, gotten approval from the council yet, I did express to him that me personally, I am committed to the project. Um, but that would only depend on whether there's really a way forward because we've had several starts and stops. We've promised money, um, and funding and then the project never gets off the road. We've given money and then the project gets delayed. So that is some concern that I have. What I asked him to do is that because we're entering the budget, um, negotia, or not negotiation, but the budget discussion process for the town of Indian Trail for fiscal year 2021, 2022, I did ask him that we keep in touch monthly. He and I are going to talk monthly just so that way he can let me know exactly where things stand if there are any, um, for, if there any, um, foreseeable delays that are going to come up. Um, and that way I can inform the town as to, or town staff and, and council as to what, um, these delays are and the town and the council will make that determination. Um, I also expressed to him very clearly that the town did, the voters of the town did pass a bond referendum back, I think in 2011 to the tune of $10 million and that bond expires, I think in November of this year. So we would sort of need to know fairly soon whether there's a definite, a, a, a definitive, um, position on DOT moving forward with that road or if they are not going to do it. So therefore I can keep, you know, everybody informed. Um, and I'll pause here, sir, for any questions from anybody that I may answer.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Um, you know, I, I, I think we had a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we had a process where we were going to, um, at certain junctions when they had, uh, done certain things that we would pay them the, the million dollars and I think was, the first was right away. Um, and if I'm not mistaken, they went ahead and took our money without having anything done. So I'm, I'm trying to understand uh, where we are in the process, uh, in that, you know, it does, I, I don't, are they working on any right away?
They are not, they, they are not working on any right away right now. That would be the next phase for them would be basically to resume where they left off, which was right away acquisition. Um, Karen can probably speak to the nature of the contract, but I don't know that if it's said specifically that we pay them at every juncture. I know that we would go, we were going to pay them the $5 million over five years, if I'm not mistaken, but that the expectation is the money that we, we are paying would essentially be used for right away acquisition. I do not know if it was specific saying if they didn't mix meet X, then they don't get Y and so forth. Karen, you, you tell me if I'm mistaken here.
No, that's correct. So the, the town had, uh, had agreed to pay a million dollars a year, um, beginning in fiscal So the the town had agreed to pay a million dollars a year, beginning in fiscal 2019, skipping 20 and then into 21 again. All the funding for the town was designated for right of way acquisition, effectively meaning that we were the up, some of the upfront money with the right of way acquisition. That's the current status of the agreement and I'm very glad that we're in communication with DOT because it is dependent on what their plans are before we can, what our legal rights are with regard to the contract.
Does that answer your question successfully, Mike?
Yes.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, my understanding when we were, when we were going through this is we were trying to establish milestones so that we didn't get hooked, get the holding the bag, holding the bag of empty money. And so what we were, I thought what we were trying to do is to ensure that we weren't just gonna keep paying a million dollars, million dollars, million dollars, and they keep postponing and then this road doesn't get built, but we pointed up the 5 million. Maybe we need to go back and relook at that contract or that letter again?
Right. Contracts are, yeah, and just, you know, the contracts are two ways. They, the DOT is obligated to perform and we are obligated to perform. If the DOT does not perform, they are in breach. So that's, that's the, that's where I would call the status at this point and they clearly have not performed to date, in spite of, you know, what they're advertising on their website and everything else too. So, you know, this is a conversation that that needs to happen and we need to have good information before the town writes another check.
So, thank you, Karen. One of the things I'll just mention is, he did ask me if the town would want to delay the project. And I said, well, that's not the intent, which is why we we pointed up, or we committed 5 million, given one. What I can do is, when I speak to him next, I'll see if I can get either him or some representative to attend one of our town council meetings to give an update, right? That way we can ask real time questions. Now, me, I do not speak for the rest of the council, you guys can do that yourselves, but in my view, I think communication has resumed, which is good. It was, it was non-existent from since, you know, March of last year, when we went into this whole COVID situation. There are fiscal challenges, we all understand that, but at the same time, the challenges that the state have, we do as well as a town. And that's, you know, the hard, the hard earned taxes that our taxpayers pay. That being said, if we can get some indication from them that they are willing to move forward, then I think the town council will sort of have that information to make an informed decision when it comes to the budget, the, you know, the budgetary items as to the funding of this, whether it's for the bond or whatever means we have. And I think that that way we can, you know, I think we can get there. In the end, I'd really like to see the road built, from what I've been hearing over the summer and later into 2020, was that the road was gonna, you know, probably be delayed until 2030 something. That's not what I'm hearing now, so that's a good sign, right? Right of way acquisitions mean, as soon as that's done, hopefully, construction can begin and and therefore we can have the road widened, you know, and go from there.
Any other questions?
Mayor.
Yes.
Question to Mayor Pro Tim McIntyre.
Yes, sir.
I understand that you'd like us to schedule, you'll reach back out to DOT and schedule a time when they can be at one of our meetings, is that correct?
Yes, sir. What I'll do, I'll reach out to DOT to see who will be able to attend the meeting and then what I'll do, I'll have, put that person and or put Miss, Mrs. Quinn in touch with them or you, and then you guys can kind of work out the logistics. I'll just make, I'll just see who was possible, who's able to attend and allow you guys to kind of work out when and and who that, and the time and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the boards and committees, applicants for UDO steering committee. Mr. Barber, you asked to field this one. Did we lose Todd again?
Mayor, if you don't mind while we're waiting, I can give a quick overview.
I'm here.
Okay. What, Brandy, did you want to give a quick overview before he does that?
No, that's okay, only if council chooses to.
I'm sorry. No, I want to appreciate everybody sending in their applications. It looked like we got a really good field of people. The, I'm kind of, you know, when people want to volunteer, I'm kind of really happy to let them do it, it's kind of my philosophy and in talking to the staff and different ones, it looks like they're, you know, open to having a really good group of people here and a large group. So really what I like to do is kind of go ahead and get into the nominations. I've looked it over and kind of done some texting and things and, but on the community appointments, I've got nine people here. They meet the, all the criteria of someone on the planning board, having residence, local business owners, developer, contractor, so we meet all the requirements that are up there to fill seats. So to kind of get to it then, what I'd like to do is to appoint Joseph Litch, seat one, Mark Easterguard, seat two, Stephen Dotson, seat three, Dennis Gay, seat four, James Jackson, seat five, Terry Devine, seat six, Casey Ball, seat seven, Colton Harrell, seat eight, Mackenzie Moser, seat nine. To appoint these to the Indian Trail Steering Committee for the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, to serve for a term limit sufficient to complete the projected task, is the motion.
I have a question.
Who has a question? Who's that?
It's Councilmember Morris.
Okay, Jerry, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm reading the, the boards and committee diagram here and I see six seats for the top section. Are we, are we, are we picking six or nine?
The council is, can select as many members as they would like to have. This was just an initial plan based on what our planning director had recommended, but it is up to council to choose.
Councilmember Morris, just to provide a little bit more clarity, when the original memo went out, we had a certain number of applications. Since that time, we've received additional applications, so that numbering on the first memo no longer makes quite as much sense.
Is there a, just hypothetically, if all these people wanted to serve, is that too many people?
12 is, is a pretty big number. You normally want to be around nine to 11 on your board members. 12 works good because if you look at, Chris Plata is gonna be a consultant and so he ideally wouldn't, you know, be voting on any recommendations and that, that pulls us down to 11, which gives us an odd number. And of course, you always want to add numbers so that you don't get a tie vote.
Okay, so I'm sorry, the print is so small on my screen, I'm so sorry. I'm trying to see under the residents, how many are listed there? I see one with the, two with an asterisk, I believe. That's Carrie and Casey. And I also.
They're duplicates, they're residents and also either local business owner and developer. So Casey Ball is not only a resident, but he's also a developer slash contractor.
Hmm. Okay, then on, on that, on that, on the context then of what we're trying to appoint here, I agree that the, you know, you do pull one from the planning board. I agree that you'd get a local business owner. I agree that you do get a developer contractor in that seat five and six, but I also think that we look at the true residents, not a resident developer, to fill the resident spots. I think that's a little disingenuous to the resident if we stack it with developers and we don't allow that to happen on the developer side. Just my comment to think about.
Mayor, I made a motion.
Yes, are there any other comments? Okay, Mr. Barber's made the motion.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, sorry, Mike.
I think there, it's Mr. Colton Harrell. I believe he, his residence is Matthews.
Residency is not necessarily a requirement. Brandy, do you want to speak to that? They're local business owners and residents.
Sure, so we're looking for, you know, developer contractor, real estate, local business owner. He is not listed under Indian Trail residence, so he would not serve in that capacity.
Does that answer your question, Mike? You look confused and concerned.
So, but he, 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 he does qualify to be on the steering committee?
Yes, sir. We certainly wouldn't want to proceed with an advisory committee without having some representation from, you know, one of the biggest players in this game, so to speak. So certainly he, he would meet that, that criteria.
Okay.
Any other questions? Therefore, Mr. Barber has his motion on the table to approve. Do we need to repeat the names?
I can go.
I can do it, or you, you want to do it, Ms. Queen, or?
Oh, if you, why don't you let me do it and you affirm, would that work?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Joseph Lynch, one, Mark Easterguard, two, Stephen Dotson, three, Dennis Gay, four, James Jackson, five, TJ Devine, six, Casey Ball, seven, Colton Harrell, eight, Mackenzie Moser, nine, and then Exoficio, I guess, members for the professional appointments.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Cohen? I didn't hear, again, I didn't hear you.
Approve.
Okay. Mr. Head? You're on mute?
Approve.
Mr. McIntyre? And Mr. Morris?
Approve.
Okay, let the record stand, that passes unanimously. Brandy, Mike, you'll be in touch with these, with everyone and get this all started?
I will do that by them as well.
Mayor, we gotta make a, we gotta make a motion on the professional appointments too.
Oh, do we separately?
I think so.
Yes. Brandy, before I say that, do we want these three to have a vote?
Yes, the two TCC member and Union County Public Works, again, Economic Development, Chris Plata is gonna act as a consultant for us.
Can we assign them seats 10 and 11 then for Union County and TCC?
Sure, absolutely.
And then a consultant and a consultant, so we only need to make a motion for Audrey for seat 10 and Todd for seat 11.
Mr. Barber, did you want to take care of that?
I think I heard that right. I make a motion to appoint Audrey Lofton, seat 10, and Todd Hunsinger, seat 11. Do I need to do Chris Plata?
I don't believe so, he's just gonna be a consultant with no vote, no vote, no vote.
Okay.
Okay, to the Indian Trail Steering Committee for the town, Indian Trail, North Carolina, to serve for a term limit sufficient to complete the projected task.
Okay. Mr. Barber's, Mr. Barber's made the motion, Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. Cohen? Okay, Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
Mr. Morris? Somewhere there. Jerry, can you hear me?
Approve.
Okay, I believe I didn't miss anybody, did I? Nope, okay, that passes unanimously, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to item B, honorary actions. Mr. Cohen, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. Something that I think the council had talked about in the past, we just had a passing of one of our great citizens, council members, Shirley Howe, and I would like to suggest that, that we name a room after her at the town hall, the big room downstairs. Shirley was a valuable citizen who loved her town. She attended meetings for years with, on council and off the council, never missing a meeting either way. And I met Shirley many years ago out campaigning and found her to be one of the most sincere, loving people of her town that I had ever met. I had the honor to work with her doing several golf charities. She worked very hard to raise money for different charities. She was a member of the Miracle League Baseball for Children, worked very hard at that and Shirley was one of a kind and this town surely will miss her. And I think it would be a great appreciation that we named the big room downstairs, the room that I remember seeing her in quite a few times, smiling and working for the town down in that room with honoring her with the name, the Shirley Howe Room, and possibly putting maybe her picture up there with a plaque.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, is there any questions by council from Mr. Cohen?
I think it's a great idea. This is Todd Barber and I really appreciate Mr. Cohen bringing this up. Shirley always said, well, the great friend David Cohen was and, you know, and so I, I think, yeah, the right person made the recommendation and I really appreciate Mr. Cohen doing this and I'd love to see the big room down there be named after Shirley. She deserves it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a question. David, are you talking about the VIP room or the community room?
I'm speaking of the, the big community room and this, and this is, we put this up for debate for council, whichever, we think council, but my, I had in mind the, the big community.
Okay, I, I was just trying to get clarification. Yeah, I'm fine.
Any other questions? Mr. Cohen, I'm assuming we need a motion for this?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to name the community room downstairs at town hall, the Shirley Howe, with her picture on it. That's my motion.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion to name the community room, the Shirley Howe Community Room in honor of Shirley Howe and her years of service, both as an elected official and as a citizen of this town. Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Mr. Head?
Approve.
Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
Mr. Morris?
Wholeheartedly approve.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Sorry, it's hard not to get choked up on that one. Okay, that brings us to the manager's update.
Okay, I have two items. One, I'll talk a little bit about the budget process we're getting ready to go through and then I'll give you a report on resolution we received from Red, Weddington earlier today. As you think about this coming budget process, there's three terms I want you to think about. One is core values, priority and budget. And the way we're gonna do the budget this year is both staff and the board will work together to identify what are our core values as a town government. And next week, I think the COG will be reaching out to each of you to have kind of a Q and A individually to talk about the town as you see it and what do you see or, or when we talk about Indian Trail, what do we mean, what are our values? And they're gonna be doing the same thing with the staff, but in a little bit different format. And we'll come together on February 24th from 5:30 to 7:30, both staff and the board, to talk about that and develop a, a platform of what are our town values and what are the priorities as we see them to be. Because from our values, we develop our priorities and staff will come back and they will develop a budget based on those priorities as, as the board has established. And so that will be the second of two meetings that we'll have and that will be also from 5:30 to 7:30, where you'll have a chance to interact with the staff and the staff will have a chance to share with you what they will be recommending. And the staff will have a chance to share with you what they will be recommending in the upcoming budget. And from that, then we'll start to put the meat on the bones, and we'll have a draft budget prepared in April, which I will share with you, and then do the presentation, the first meeting in May, public hearing, second meeting in May, and approve the budget, the first meeting in June. So we want this year's budget to, to mean a lot, and we want this budget to tell a story other than just, these are numbers on a page of what we want to do. And if there's not any questions, I'll move to the second item. Okay, my light has cut off in my office, so I've got to read by computer light. We have received a resolution opposing the Glenhurst subdivision rezoning request from our neighbors over in Weddington. I'll send you a copy of that resolution in the morning, and we will also share it with the planning board at their February meeting. And that is my report.
Okay.
Mr. McLaurin?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the appointments that I'll be setting up with council, I'll be reaching out to them in the morning for February 3rd, Wednesday, the afternoon, or during the day on February 4th. So please be thinking about those dates, and I'll, I'll reach out to you guys in the morning.
And when the clerk gets on your trail, she does not get off until she gets the appointment scheduled. We do have one item for closed session consultation with attorney, and so that's all I've got. Whenever you adjourn this meeting, excuse me, whenever we finish this, we'll then need to log on on a different link for the closed session, and Kathy and/or Abby will explain how that works.
Okay, we'll move the council comments.
Mr. Morris?
Happy New Year. Happy New Year, everyone. Good night.
Mr. Barber?
Thank you. Again, congratulations to Randy Simpson and for his service award. Mike and Francis Knight on their Citizens of the Quarter. Again, I'd like to say I appreciate the sheriff's office, and I don't know if anybody's watching, but I know on their Instagram account, it really shows how great a sheriff's department we got. When you see how many awards people getting for the long number of years they've been with the sheriff's department, different awards. So I'd appeal to Captain James maybe to kind of put more of that in his comments about maybe some of the ones at Indian Trail, the awards they're getting. But I just want to say congratulations to all those people and the fine job they're doing. Next is, again, is, I just want to say thoughts and prayers to the family of Shirley Howe. And I, you know, just her family and her and everybody welcomed me when I came in on council, and she quickly became, befriended me, mentored me. And I appreciate the council and everybody wanting to name a room after. I think it was the right thing to do, and I know she loved everybody, and she admired our mayor and everyone. And I just, you know, want to say that she's been, she did a great job, and, and it's good to be remembered for that quality of an individual that she was. God bless Shirley Howe. Thank you.
Mr. Cone?
I said exactly, Todd, that's, that's very, very, very true about Shirley. And I said my piece about her earlier, and she's a wonderful asset in this town. And I, I'll never forget her. I know none of us will. Just real quickly, I would like to thank both Abby and Kathy. I thought y'all were for putting this meeting together tonight. I know you worked real hard, and it went off pretty darn well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And thank you for Abby. I don't know if she can, you can hear her, but thank you.
I, I hope she can hear that. Abby, could you hear that?
Thank you very much.
Good, well, I'm glad, you certainly deserved it. You helped me today to, you know, hear no evil, see no evil guy. You helped a lot. But I also like to thank Todd Barber. You, you did a good job tonight putting together the committee. I thought that wrapped it up a lot quicker than it, than, than it could have, could have gone or should have gone. But I appreciate your work at that, and I appreciate your, you know, working to make us a better council. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Todd and Adam, both, for helping one of our people out here in Bonterra on a very quick basis about some of the muddy roads they had up here with a quick response. And you guys, Fred's a great man and retired Air Force man who's done a lot for our country. And when, when you guys react that fast and, and help, help our citizens out, speaks volumes for our staff. Our staff's the best. Happy New Year to everybody, and I look forward to seeing you next meeting.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Both David and Todd did speak about Shirley. And I want to say that this is somebody who has always put the town first. She was very non-controversial. She always did her, did her job the very best and approached it with a very serious manner. Took time to deliberate and make sure that, you know, she listened to all, all points. So heartfelt condolences go out to her family and all her friends. Thank you very much, staff, for a good meeting tonight. Abby, the way that you, you have the Zoom work, you know, you can move people up and down, that, that's pretty impressive. So within a short few months, we've come a long way with technology, so good job on that. The, the rest of staff, thank you very much for all that you do. I do appreciate everything that you guys do. Residents in the town, also, I know from some of the comments, do appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Mr. Alvarez? Oh, sorry, Mr. Head, I'm sorry.
There's not a whole lot more than I can say. Just ditto what everybody else said. I got a couple of things with Shirley. You know, the reason I got on this was, you know, and I've said this before, but David was the one that told me he wanted his, wanted my help in helping him get reelected. And then we started talking about the planning board. He got me on the planning board. As I became more involved on the planning board, I started going to the old town hall. And I met this older lady. And David kind of warned me about her to, to begin with, and it was Shirley. And so we, we started up a conversation, and Shirley, for those of you that remember, she always sat in the back, and Ken, her husband, used to sit with her. So she came up to me and we started talking and, and told me who she was. And, and she just said, why don't you run for, for town council? I said, no, I'm not interested. Ken spoke up real quick and says, look, I'm going to tell you something, she gets what she wants. So you might as well go ahead and accept it. She was, she was a great lady. I thank her for, for allowing me to, to join this fine group. And we'll, we'll miss her. Also want to thank our town manager. I had sent in a couple of things that I had seen over in, in this area. One being on Bonterra Parkway or Village Parkway. There was a welding company that all of a sudden showed up. And then the, I, I've already mentioned it, but we're Poplin in Indian Trail, Unionville. There's that project that council voted on a couple of years ago, a year, year and a half ago. I don't remember exactly when, but. So they've started that, demolished it, and then my wife was telling me, hey, have you noticed that there's someone living in that trailer over there in a pickup truck? And then third, I was watching the, on the other end, on Faith Church Road in a Bonterra Village Way, the road kind of deteriorating based on the heavy equipment right there next to the road. So I sent something in to, to our town manager. But, but he had already beat me to the punch, or someone had code enforcement had already, already stopped the, the business. Within a day, the interloper on there was gone, and there was assurance that the road would be repaired. So really, I, I really appreciate all the quick work and the heads up that, that everyone does for staff and, staff and, and Mike. And Shirley will be missed. And I just want to say thanks to council for a very good meeting. Everybody drive home safe. Thanks.
Mayor Alvarez?
I'm just going to end this meeting briefly and say they, everyone's pretty much summed everything up pretty well, and just leave us with Shirley, we love you, we will miss you, and may we all strive to be half the example you have set for us. On that note, we have a closed session under N C G S 143-318-11 to consult with the town's attorney. Quickly, there should be a second link for a closed session. Did everybody receive it? Is everybody on the same page for that, so we don't miss anyone?
Mayor? Let me just ask Karen or Abby or Kathy a quick question. Under the statutes, we will go into closed session. We will log on to that second link. But you, to officially adjourn the meeting, you have to come back into open session to adjourn. So does that mean that we're going to have to re-log back on to the first link? Or does anybody know how we need to handle that?
Mayor, do you want to take that one? We talked about.
I'll take that one. We're going to log off here once we go into closed session, to go into closed session. Once we're done, we're just going to stay on that same link, come back out, and then adjourn.
And we just have to give Abby a moment to livestream the closing of this meeting so that the meeting on YouTube is in two parts, but the second part is just simply closing the closed session in open session and then adjourning.
Everybody okay with that?
And we'll be live feeding the motion to adjourn, Kathy on the other.
Yes. All right, yeah, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Hopefully this goes off well. So with that being said, I'll need a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Mr. Cone's made the motion, Mr. Morris?
Approve.
Mr. McIntyre? Mr. Barber?
Approve.
And Mr. Head?
Approve.
Okay, everyone, let's log off here, click that second link, and let's meet in the other room. And we can get this done with.
All right, you are good to go.
Okay, I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Mr. Head made the motion, Mr. Cone? Mr. McIntyre?
Approve.
Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Mr. Morris?
Approve.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, everybody, Mr. Cone, I'm sure you agree?
I agree.
Mr. McIntyre?
I made the motion, but I still.
Well, okay, I'm just making sure on that. Mr. Head?
Approve.
Todd Barber?
Approve.
And Mr. Morris?
You betcha.
All right, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you.
All right.